Good evening and welcome. This is the conference meeting for the North Brunswick Township Board of Education for Wednesday, June 7th, 2023. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation under God, liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ali, Mr. Brockman, Mr. Carter, Ms. James, Ms. Keith, Mr. Legori, Dr. Patel, Ms. Toth, Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Sunday, January 29th, 2023 in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the Board Office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick; mailed to the Home News Tribune, The Sentinel, and the Clerk of Township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly-elected Board members. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We're very lucky to have a presentation by Mr. Neller from North Brunswick Township High School tonight, and we'll jump right into that. Thank you.
All right, good evening. I would like to welcome the Board of Education to the high school tonight. I know that this is the final of a series of conference meetings at the different schools. I appreciate that you always save the best for last. So, welcome tonight. I want to welcome all the students and families that are here as well. I think it'll truly highlight some of the brief things I want to talk about about the state of North Brunswick High School in 2022, 2023. First of all, I would just, I'm not going to read all of their names, but I do appreciate that almost all of them are in the back of the room tonight. Just like students, they like to sit in the back also as much as possible. But I would like to recognize the North Brunswick Township High School School Leadership Team. This is a very large school. We have almost 1,900 students and over 200 staff members who work here on a daily basis, and I would not be able to run what really is a small town without them. So, I do appreciate all of their efforts throughout the year. I have four assistant principals and four deans who work, each two of them work with grade levels from 9 through 12. And then I also have school and district-based supervisors who support us throughout the school year to make sure we provide the best academic program possible for all of our students. So, I do want to thank them. Seventeen administrators may seem like not a lot, but when you really look at the size of this school, you know, everyone is needed. So, I definitely appreciate the support of the district in allowing me to have that many administrators working here. Some of our recent recognitions, you may have seen the banners to your left as you came in from the auditorium entrance tonight. For the third year in a row, we were ranked this year as one of America's top-performing high schools. That's based upon our graduation rate. Thank you. That's based upon our graduation rate and our number of students enrolled in AP classes and our AP test scores. So, we really do try to challenge and encourage our students to, basically, we encourage them to challenge themselves in high-level academic courses. So, we're rewarded for that. For the eighth consecutive year, our district and school have been recognized as one of America's best communities for music education. And I think tonight, when you meet the students from our winter percussion, you'll get a chance to see why our district is very proud of our music program and why we've been recognized so many times over the last eight years. Each year, we recognize a Governor's Teacher of the Year. Nominees are put together every November for the Teacher of the Year. Students, parents, and staff have the opportunity to nominate teachers. And this year's Teacher of the Year is an English teacher, Mrs. Julie Mercier. And he's usually around, this is actually the area, one of the areas that he's responsible for in the evening. But our Support Person of the Year is one of our custodians, Mr. Ray Colia. One of the things we truly believe in, especially since the pandemic, is in supporting the whole student, not only academically, but socially and emotionally. And we really do strive to support every student at the high school. And again, we have almost 1,900 students, but we really do strive to provide them as much support as possible to be successful. So, we have therapeutic programs we offer at the high school. We have the opportunity to work with Rutgers, to have counselors from UBHC on-site, supporting our students. We have our guidance counselors and our members of our child study team who are here to support students, both for their academics and any other needs they may have throughout the school year. This year, in our library, in our MRC, we added what's called Raider Space, which is a counselor who's dedicated to working with students in groups, providing them with support that they may need throughout the school year. It's a dedicated space. She, Rachel Darge, our counselor in charge of it, has been working very hard to make it a very welcoming space. I have not yet sat on the beanbag chairs that she has in her office, but I know that a lot of students, I'll go in there, and there'll be multiple students in there throughout the day. So, we're really trying to find a space to support students in the building. We also have our School Assistance Counselor, Ms. Tishio. We also have worked really hard over the last few years. We wanted to be sure that we were supporting not only our high-level students through APs and honors courses, but also our students who come from the middle school and for one reason or another, they're struggling. So, for the past two years, we've offered a course called STAR, which is Students Taking Academic Responsibility. Last year, we started in grade nine. This year, we have grade nine and 10. And with the support of the Board of Education, next year, we will have a grade 11 STAR class. And the idea is to provide those students with a class where they can learn the skills they need to be successful in their other classes. It's also meant to model, just like our Avid program, it's meant to model a family environment and a safe space where students can go, where they feel comfortable throughout the school day. So, we're very happy with that program, and next year will be year three of it. We also established a few years ago what we call our Road to Success Alternative School Program. We have 30 students enrolled in that program throughout the school year who, for one reason or another, moving around the main building, the general ed building during the course of the day, just, it wasn't conducive to them. And for those reasons, it impacted their education and, in some cases, their behavior. So, we wanted to provide them with a safe space for them to focus on their academics. And we're very proud of the fact that that program, which is run by Mr. Eric Olander, and we have a teacher in there, Mr. Alex Diaz, for the second year in a row, every senior enrolled in that program will graduate with their class on June 21st. We've also had an opportunity this year, and I'd like to thank the district for being very supportive. I feel like we're back to normal, so to speak, for class trips and different activities. So, students were once again able to go out into the community, out and compete throughout different, throughout the tri-state area. I have what's called a Principal's Advisory, which is 30 students across grades 9 through 12, who I meet with on a monthly basis, and we talk about their insights on what we can do better as a school. They're my eyes and ears. They tell me things about what we can do better, where things can change. And I also try to give them insight into why sometimes adults make the decisions they do in school buildings. But for the last two years, they've been asking, and we did it last year, and then we were able to do it again this year, they wanted to kind of be a support system for the 7th and 8th graders eventually coming up to the high school. So, we did this last June, and then we just did it again last week, where the 30 members from the Principal's Advisory went to the middle school, and they met with the 7th and 8th graders in small groups. So, that's the picture on the left, is those students outside of the middle school. We also, last week, we had a field day for some of our self-contained special ed programs. Those students don't always get the opportunity to see some of our general ed students. So, last week, they had an opportunity to go out to the football field for the, for a morning, and with some of our star athletes, they got to have a field day. And it was a really great program. It was put together by Mr. Sci-Pot, our supervisor of Phys Ed and Health, and Mr. Ballard, who teaches our adaptive PE program. And it really was a great afternoon. I went out there, and the students were participating in games, you know, beanbag toss and things like that. And athletes were there, supporting them, cheering them on, high-fiving them, and just making it a fun opportunity for them. And we look forward to continuing. Mr. Sci-Pot said he wants to continue to make it even better next year. We're looking forward to that. Last week, if you would have come into the auditorium, you would have seen a big blue inflatable whale on the stage here because our environmental science courses, part of which have learned about endangered species throughout the school year, one of their teachers wanted to provide them with an interesting educational opportunity. So, he worked with a group called the Great Whale Consortium, and they came to our school, set up an inflatable whale. It was interactive. There were different things inside the whale so they could learn. They whale fossils. I held a whale tooth that was about this big. And it was really a great learning experience for them. So, it was just a great opportunity to see things we haven't had in the last few years that took place. So, that's the picture on the right, some of the students in front of the whale. Some of the academic initiatives that we continue to work on, again, trying to encourage students to empower themselves to take academic risks and challenges. We have an honors and AP challenge program where students can, who may not, for one reason or another, have been recommended to take an honors or AP course, they have the opportunity to apply to still take that course. And that's, we're in year five of the honors and AP challenge. We've also continued to grow our AP programs. This year, we're in the second year of our AP Capstone Diploma Program, where students can take two courses, AP Research and AP Seminar, and upon successful completion of them, they receive what's called the AP Capstone Diploma. We're one of only the few schools in the state of New Jersey that offer the AP Capstone, and we're very proud of that. We also work with Middlesex College in their High School Scholars Program. It's a dual enrollment and credit articulation program with MC, with Middlesex College. There are nine courses currently offered in our building where students can earn not only a grade and credit from MBTHS, but they can earn college credit as well. Next year, we're looking to add at least one more course into our dual enrollment program. Those courses are all college prep courses. They're not honors and AP classes. They're courses that students can take, like our Dimensions in Prejudice elective in the Social Studies Department. They're college prep courses that students can take and earn college credit for. So, that's something that we really work towards and are very proud of as well. Our Avid program, Advancement Via Individual Determination, that program, which is meant to support students in the academic middle and push them to be successful and to take honors and AP classes and to really challenge themselves. We have eight sections, two on each grade level. This is our fourth graduating class in 2023. Avid tells you that in order to be considered a successful Avid school, every student in your graduate, Avid graduating class must either commit to a four-year college or to attending the military. And we have met that every year since we've started graduating students in 2020. All right, and lastly, we have Academic Academies. You see up here the logo for our Business Academy, which we work very closely with Rutgers University. But we have our STEM Academy, which is in year five. Our Business Academy, it should be year four. I'm excited it will eventually be year six. And our Humanities, which is year three. On the bottom right, you see a picture of some of the students from our Business Academy. We have partnered with the Rutgers University Business School in what's called their Ruby Program. We're only one of five schools in the area that participates in that program. Those students get the opportunity, and this year, for the first time, we were back in person at the Rutgers Business School and not virtual. But they got an opportunity, three times this year, to go to Rutgers, to work with college mentors in the business school, to work with college professors, to participate in different activities, to learn more about the business field. And also, they got a great lunch at the business school. But the goal for that program is that in their senior year, those students, Rutgers helps them complete their college applications with the goal in mind that most of them will go to the Rutgers Business School. They'll help them with any school, but they want them to go to Rutgers Business School. So, that's something that we've been involved with for the last three years. I mean, we're very excited to see that continue. In addition to our academics, we're very proud of our clubs and extracurricular activities. We have 40 clubs available at the high school. Again, I want to thank the Board of Education because we added four clubs over the last year. We had 36, and now we have 40. The clubs are a wide variety of focus, from academic competition, community service clubs, leadership clubs, fine arts, performance clubs, culture clubs. We have Journalism Club, we have a Debate Club. Our students participated this year. Again, we were able to go out in the community for the first time in a few years. So, they participated in competitions that were local, regional, statewide, and national. All right, so we're very excited about that. Our students also, we talked to students in early January, and one of the things students told us was they wanted to see more cultural events at the school this year. So, on May 5th, our Latin American Club put on the first-ever Somos Unos Latin American Festival that night, and it was a great event in the Commons. And next week, we will be having our first Juneteenth Spirit Celebration Week. So, we'll be sharing with students what we'll be doing next week by the end of this week. So, we're very excited about those events for the first time and something we're looking forward to continuing every year. We also offer at the high school 22 total sports during the fall, winter, and spring. Over the course of those three seasons, 700 athletes came out to participate, which is something that we're also very proud of. And this year, in the class of 2023, we had 20 students who signed commitments to continue their academic and athletic career in college. And a lot of them, some of them are here tonight. So, we do want to acknowledge them. Mr. Morel, our Athletic Director, who you'll hear from a little later, he put together three different sign, three? Two, two signing days for students in the gym where they got an opportunity to sign their letters of intent in front of their parents. So, we're very excited about that. You know, it was a great, you see the picture, that was our spring signing. The coaches always come and talk about the athletes, but they put in the work to get where they are, and we're very excited for them in their future. Before I turn it over to some of our student presentations, I do want to thank, not only again, the Board of Ed, but our staff, our students, and our community for all of their support. And we're looking forward to graduating the class of 2023 on Wednesday, June 21st, at Jersey Mike's Arena on Rutgers University. To show off, again, some of our commitment to clubs and different activities and athletics, I did want to first start off tonight, our Raider Robotics Team 25, who this year competed in the World Championships in Houston, Texas. They wanted to do a little presentation tonight. So, I welcome Team 25.
Technology, what a concept. Hi. I'm Wayne Coakley. I'm the coach, head coach of Raider Robotics, and we're here tonight to tell you a little bit about the team and talk about our season and demonstrate the robot we built this year. Okay? Raider Robotics has been around for now 26 years. It's our 26, going on 27th year. And it's a different kind of organization. It's a team, we compete in what's known as the first robotics competition. Unlike other teams, this is a team where we actually kind of build our playing pieces from the bottom up in a very short time. In result of this thing, our students are learning engineering skills such as CAD-ing, programming, using tools that they've never had a chance to use before. And for many years now, our teaching goes from student to student, generation to generation. We were at a loss for the last couple of years because graduating off two years during COVID and not competing, we lost a lot of our mentoring students that would have taught the younger students. But we're getting back on our feet, and generally, the year has been pretty good for us. And I would like to share some of that with you. First of all, the robotics team works by building most of our parts by hand and doing metalworking type of skills. We use 3D printers, and a lot of these things are materials that students really don't get much of a chance to work with. We do a lot of brainstorming, and since all of this stuff is designed first on paper, we don't make anything without having it all tested out first, mathematically tested and so forth. What happened to the board? Ah, I handed off, I think to Mr. Legori, a copy of one of our plan books. Every year, we, actually, every single part on a robot is built and designed and so forth. And all this drafting and CAD-ing, as he passes it around, will show you. This is all done by students, and, you know, I'm very, very proud of them. Now, unlike a lot of things, most of these kids have never been on sports teams and such like that. So, this is a very unique opportunity for them to work in a think tank and work to plan a project, you know, develop the pride of working together and having to deal with personalities and deal with problems. The first competition is designed to make the problem difficult. We're only allowed to have about six to eight weeks from the start, when we first get the title of the game, to when the robot has to go out on the field and compete. And anytime you try to plan and build something from scratch in six weeks, things are going to go wrong. That means design it, make the parts, put the parts together, break the parts, program everything, get the team to work together. And, you know, it's a very complex process, and we are here every single day, including the weekends, making this thing work. Every hour is precious. Now, first is a worldwide competition. Currently in the world, there are about 9,000 teams. We are team number 25. That shows you how long ago we started. Okay? The competition season starts the first weekend in January after New Year's. That's where we receive a game. The game changes every single year. And from then on, we have to do all this building and designing by the middle of April. That's when the competitions all end. Our competition season actually starts the first week of March, where we go through regional qualifiers, and then we qualify for the regional championship. And if we do well enough, we qualify for the world championship. Okay? And like I said, we design, we build, we program, we strategize, all in that very short period of time. I used to have red hair. This is where I have now. 1997 was our first competition season, okay? Every blue banner, we have 24 blue banners, means a tournament win, okay? They're equivalent to like a state championship. And we've also been world champions twice, world finalists twice. That means everywhere, Brazil, Israel, China, the whole bit. So... I'm really proud of these guys. The team has graduated about 1,000 students. Many of them are doing amazing things. I have people that drive nuclear submarines. I have one that worked on the Opportunity Rover on Mars. I have ones that have started companies and become millionaires and now come back and support the team. It's really amazing what these kids can potentially become if they're given a shot. And that's the point of the program. And this year, we had three competitions that we had, three And this year, we had three competitions that we had three silver medals. There's this one team that keeps beating us. We're working on it. Notice the team is kind of small. Usually we'd start the year at 100 kids and they'd narrow down to about 40. This year, we started at 40 and narrowed down to about 20. But you know what? Those 20 kids got a lot out of this program. At least I think they do. Do you guys agree? Okay. We also made it to the world championship in Houston. Picture going to the Olympics, you know, where you have communities of athletes from all around the world and you get to meet people from places you're never going to ever see. Okay, for example, right next to us, we had a team from Melbourne, Australia. And they, they thought it was great that we were, you know, doing all these neat things with our robot, and we learned from them, they learned from us. The Hawaiian uniform is kind of a shtick thing we do. Yeah, since 98. And the whole idea was, think about going to the tropics, put it in front of you, and maybe you will. And that's the idea. Any case, since 2018, where we've been pretty much kind of quiet here at home, we went back to Houston this year, and I thank everybody for letting us do that. It was a really great experience for everyone. I think these kids got a great deal out of it. As you could see, this team has become a very tight-knit group, but started out as a bunch of strangers back in January. I know that as these kids go on, they will always remember these years in high school, and they always have these alumni friends they can, you know, turn to and talk to and go back to. A lot of my coaches that I work with now originally started out as alumni, you know, students years ago. And they come back year after year after year. If they're in the area, they're always welcome to stop and visit. And a lot of them work with the kids. We also work with engineers, people, parents. Bristol-Myers Squibb has always been our supporting sponsor, and they have supplied us with engineers. And the idea is, the engineers give the wisdom and the kids give the ideas, and we work out and build the robots from that. So what are we doing now? We're cleaning. We're reflecting on what we're going to do next year, making a plan. We're also going to train more new kids come September. And they're going to learn how to do things like use a router table and program in Java programming and how to make encoders work and, you know, all the fun things that go into wiring robots. And we always have something going for the next season. And we fundraise and promote. Our big fundraiser, we invite everybody to, will be November 11th, Brunswick Eruption. We will have 42 teams from across the region come here and play the game from this year one more time in the gym. So make, make a plan to come out on that date and see what this is all about. And our sponsors, of course, the school supports us with our registrations. We have our parent organization, a lot of which are here tonight. And we also have corporate sponsors. L3 Harris, Bristol-Myers Squibb has been with us from the start. And of course, Pikatini STEM, that's the Department of Defense. Neil Perico, former student who supports us, Optimum. Our budget runs tens of thousands every year. And we do a lot of it by fundraising and a lot of it by sponsorship. And our members, of course, just to give us an idea, my two assistant coaches, Mike Kesslinger and Nick Montagna, and all these mentors, parents, former students, so forth, that come through. And then, of course, our kids, and each one has a job. You don't just hang around and party. Everybody works. So... And that's basically my short presentation. I guess you want to see the robot. So hopefully we won't kill anybody. This robot is controlled by Wi-Fi, and basically what he's operating this with is a joystick and an Xbox controller, which they programmed. Go. Don't kill anybody. This robot can operate in 360 degrees, make a turn on a dime. Well, hopefully that laptop wasn't helpful. Rippers are operated with compressed air. And the rest of this is all 12-volt electric motors. And I'm just praying he doesn't run it off the edge. The game this year involved taking these cones and these little puffy square cubes and putting them on racks and making three in a rows. And it was... The whole round is only two minutes long, so the more you can put up, the faster, the better it was. Are you done? One more. Oh, no. Taking a bow. Thank you.
So I do, I do want to thank the members of Team 25, their mentors, their coaches and their families who came out tonight. We're very proud of them. If you ever go into our MRC, the banners that they showed you a picture of are proudly displayed of all of their competition wins and their world championships. And I know they're working already. You know, they didn't do as well as they wanted to this year at the world championships, but Mr. Cokely told me they are already brainstorming, as he said, and thinking about what they can do differently next year with the goal in mind of bringing another world championship back to MBTHS. So congratulations to them for all their hard work throughout the school year. I'd next like to, to welcome again, as I mentioned, we were named for the eighth consecutive year as one of America's best communities for music education. This past spring, the MBTHS Winter Percussion Team was regional champion. So I would like to welcome them and their advisors to the stage.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, Mr. Neller, members of the Board of Ed. So the Winter Percussion Program here at North Brunswick has existed for, how long? Help me out. 19 years. And in that time, we have been 17-time champions of our circuit, 11 years, including this year, undefeated. This year was a bittersweet, very special year. As many of you are aware, we suffered the tragic loss of our instructor for 30 years, Mr. Paul Bon Jovi. His wife Rita is with us in the audience tonight. The, the Bon Jovis are part of the MBTHS Music Family. And when we lost Paul two days before our first competition this year, the kids all came together in the band room the very next day, literally hours after learning of his passing, talked about what they wanted to do. And they said that they still wanted to go out and compete and honor Paul and celebrate his life and his legacy. And once again, they not only won their regional championships this year, but they achieved the highest score in the history of the drumline this year. So we couldn't be prouder of them. So I'm hoping that this, this link works here, and we'd like to show you a video of their championship performance. Hey, here we go. All right.
Ready? How do I get out of this? I'm going back to your presentation here.
So like I said, we absolutely could not be prouder of these kids. It would be cliche to say I learned more from them than they did from me, but that's, it's really, really true. These are incredible kids, incredible drummers, and, and they've just followed the tutelage of Paul and Ms. Nudelman and Mr. Scala, who are just way bigger percussion experts than I will ever, 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 ever be. And I'm just so thankful for all the hard work they've done this season. So congratulations again, guys.
Wait, Ms. Nudelman, before you go.
Every year, CJMEA, the Central Jersey Music Educators Association, hosts tryouts for what's called a region band. The region band is basically like an all-star band. Kids from all different regions in the state get to try out. And every year, we have, we always send from, from fifth through 12th grade, we always send students out to audition. And this year, we've had, I can't very quickly count the number of folders in front of me, but I think we've had seven students who made it this year. Two from Linwood, three from, sorry, six. Two from Linwood, three from MBTMS, and one from the high school. So from the MBTMS, we, if I call your name, you can come right up to the stage. We had Michael Dina Colo, who made it for the Wind Ensemble, which is the highest ensemble that the middle school region offers. And then for the high school, he was just up here, but Liam Rosen made the high school percussion ensemble. Oh, sure, Michael, come back. Some students weren't able to make it tonight, but we also had two students from Linwood make it for choir. Ava Delapaz and Jasmine Garces both made it for choir. And we also had two more middle school students, Lassia Bedugama and Dhruv Patel also made the concert band and the percussion. Oh, Dhruv's here, good. Dhruv made it for the percussion ensemble, the middle school percussion ensemble. We're very proud of these students, and it's an incredible honor to be able to make it to the CGMAA region band. We're in one of the most competitive regions going up against schools such as East Brunswick, South Brunswick, Monroe, the Windsors, JP Stevens. And it just goes to show that our music program is just as big and just as good as all those other schools. So we're incredibly proud of these students, and we look forward to our younger ones continuing to go out. Liam's unfortunately a senior, so we can't force him to go out anymore. I've tried to get him to fail gym, but unfortunately, he won't. But we're very excited for all the young students showing such promise and for so many more students to go out in the future years. And then, if I could monopolize your time just a little bit more, let's have the entire winter percussion ensemble come up here, because I have certificates for all of you. So, as they come up, I will read all of their names off. I always say I'm a little biased, but I do say that these are some of the hardest-working kids that we have, not only at the high school, but in district as well. I've been the marching band director here in North Brunswick for the last eight years. And I also took over as percussion director along with Mr. Scala. And I'm staying as percussion director. I'm very excited. I'm also taking over for Mr. Jamie Egan as supervisor come this September. But the students can't get rid of me. I'm going to keep teaching them forever. So, in no particular order, the students who make up our winter percussion ensemble are Kriya Anumala, Nyla Basket, Stephen Biju George, Stephanie Biju George, Jacob DeAndrea, Jaden Flowers Wilson, making a mess, Juliana Galardo, Samantha Golden, Alex Gangloff, Jamila Jimenez, Baron Kalasapati, Jesse Konkanala, Kayla Keef, Vedica Kana, Lauren Kaprowski, Gabriel Lopes, Brianna Manrique, Andrew Meneses Diaz, Jose Reyes, Josue Reyes, sorry, Aryan Punjabi, Liam Rosen again, Vedica Shah, Aruhi Vakalagata, Anusha Vakalagata, John Whitworth, Nathan Yaboa, and that's it. Those are the kids. And Olivia Jarello, so sorry, and Olivia Jarello. And we're very fortunate, and Deandra Merricks also. That's, so sorry, everybody. Did I skip anybody else? Anybody else get missed? And Jaden Orenzio, so sorry. There we go. We got a lot of them. And then we have captains who lead the group. The captains of the ensemble are Liam Rosen, Vedica Shah, Aruhi Vakalagata, Jesse Konkanala, Olivia Jarello, and Julie Galardo. Those are our percussion captains, some of whom have been in this since their eighth grade year. We're super proud of them. So many of them are graduating. Raise your hand if you're a senior. So many of them are leaving me. I'm very sad. But we wish them well in their future endeavors, and we hope that they come back to visit us. So, thank you all so much.
At this time, I'd like to invite the Board of Education and Central Office Administration back up. They're going to talk about our Buddy Ball helpers.
Our next presentation will be Mr. Steven Nguyen, one of our board members for Buddy Ball.
All right, thank you, everybody. Can you hear me? All right, thank you so much for being here tonight. Aside from my role here on the Board of Ed, I also run our Buddy Ball program here in town. And Buddy Ball, I don't know if you don't know, is a program where we provide sports opportunities, soccer and basketball, for our special needs kids in district. And we offer it from basically kindergarten all the way through, I think our oldest is thirty-something. And just, you know, we have just these great opportunities to work with the kids, to help them have a great time. You know, the disabilities that we see is anywhere from autism to like physical disabilities, right? And our program has existed for about twenty-six-something years, maybe a little bit longer than that, and a number of different people have run it. And I just started running this about two years ago, a year and a half. I was voluntold to do it. But it's really been an awesome privilege to kind of run the program. We have a lot of great sponsors and supporters. Board of Ed is one. The Soccer Board is another. Our Township Rec Department and our Township Council, they support us greatly as well. So, one of the things that we do in Buddy Ball is that we try to provide our players with a buddy. That's why we call it Buddy Ball, right? We have volunteers from the middle school and high school that come and support us. And really, without them, without you guys, we really can't do anything, right? So, our volunteers work with our players. They are there next to them, encouraging them, kind of supporting them, showing them what to do. And our players have a great time. And I know we've had some of the teams come, the soccer teams have come in the fall to play with our players as well. So, we've had a great time over this past year. But this year is our first time that we wanted to be able to honor our seniors, our leaders of our Buddy Ball program, and these volunteers who have spent countless hours volunteering. I know, you know, we always say that, you know, a lot of our students have, there's a volunteer community service hours that they have to do. But these guys go beyond that. They serve, you know, fall, spring, some in the winter, you know, we have three seasons, right? And some other things as well that we do. And they serve week after week and really show our kids just love and compassion. And we're just very appreciative of the leadership that they show. So, without further ado, I'm going to, I know not everybody's here, that's on my list, but I'm going to read everybody's name. And if you're here, come on up, and I have something for you. Actually, what I'm going to do really quick is read this. I have a pin for you. You can see we're wearing this pin up here. But what it says is that, "Thank you for being a volunteer at our Buddy Ball program and being an integral part of our community. Continue to make a positive impact on the lives of others wherever you go. Together, we are stronger..." Oh, sorry, "we are stronger together." So, all right. All right, firstly, this first person, I just want to make a quick comment. He has won a lot of awards over the past few days, I think. I was just told, I wasn't there yesterday, but he's got a stack of awards from yesterday. He has been one of the integral parts of our volunteer system. He has been one of our student leaders, our student, I forgot what we called you guys, but, you know, one of our peer leaders in the school to kind of promote Buddy Ball, Aryan Anand.
If they can all stay towards the front as they get their awards, that way we can get a picture.
All right. Not sure, I don't know if for the rest of you, the smoke is really messing up my eyes in context, but Anushka Chandan. All right, I think she mentioned she wasn't going to be here, but Anjali Gupta. Eva Ng. Gabriella Sidin. Gia Dorawala. Ashish Patel. Kayla Page. And she's taken the long way. Leah Hughes. Rhea Paleath. And Sidney Ward. I think that's it. We'll move up maybe for a picture. But yeah, once again, Buddy Ball is just a great opportunity for our students to be part of the community, to allow our other students with special needs to feel part of that community, you know? So, I think, thank you again for our seniors, and I hope, you know, you guys out there, if you want to volunteer, listen to the messages. I know we can always use your help.
Good evening. I'm going to do this from down here. Just makes it a little bit easier since we have a lot of athletes that will be coming up here. My name is Sean Morell. I'm the Athletic Director at North Brunswick High School, and I'm here to present our spring awards. This spring season, we saw another great athletic contribution from these young ladies and gentlemen who are sitting here. We have eleven all-county athletes in the spring season alone, twenty-two all-division, two division championships, a Division Coach of the Year, and two Players of the Year here today. So, that's an outstanding spring season. This year, in total, we've seen twenty-two all-county athletes, sixty-seven all-division athletes, five team sportsmanship awards, three Coach of the Year, four division champions, twenty athletes who signed to the next level, and five Division One signees. So, we've had another tremendous season here for the North Brunswick Township High School Athletic Department. First, I would like to call up Coach Zelinski for girls' basketball to present. We are presenting a winter award, being that our winter athlete was playing in an All-Star game, so we do want to honor her tonight.
So, yeah, as Mr. Morell said, when the winter athletes were honored, Niall was playing in the All-Star Game, GMC All-Star Game, which he was chosen for. So, we kicked it back to the spring. But I don't think, is Niall here? I think Niall's here. But just very briefly, I mean, this young lady is, you know, an iconic performer in the history of this school. You know, she broke the school record for most points by a women's basketball player. She was in second place in all-time, you know, for girls and guys, and would have broken the record easily if it weren't for the half-season miss to COVID as a sophomore. You know, she led our team to over fifty victories during her time. She was a captain for the last two years. She was a four-time all-division player, a three-time all-GMC player. She was County Player of the Year. She was All-State Group Four player. And beyond her contributions on the court, in which she was liked by her teammates, you know, in a way that, you know, sometimes star players have a difficult time, you know, with that. And she was, you know, she was very respected by everybody up and down the roster and the coaches as well. And, you know, had such a great sense of quiet leadership about her and what she did. And as far as a student athlete is concerned, you know, it was the Board of Education in North Brunswick and our parents, but you couldn't ask for somebody to represent our school more effectively and more honorably. She was, she has over a 4.0 weighted GPA, a true student athlete. She is a leader in our avid program, has been part of the avid program for four years. You know, she's somebody who is exemplary in her, you know, her conduct in school. And, you know, as a result, she's earned a scholarship to play at Division Two Georgian Court University right here in New Jersey. And so, you know, we congratulate her on everything that she's done, her family as well, and we thank her for everything that she's given in North Brunswick. There's, you know, if you judge by the numbers of points and assists and steals, there's probably nobody who's been better who's been on the basketball court playing girls' basketball for North Brunswick Township High School in the fifty years that we've had the sport. And so, again, we say thank you. We congratulate her and we wish her all the best and hope that she could take, you know, her Raider friendships and her Raider memories with her as she goes on to the next level and plays at Georgian Court University. So, Niall McArgo.
Thank you, Coach. I'd like to call up Coach Brahini to represent the boys' golf team. Boys' golf team won the sportsmanship award this year, so one of our five sportsmanship awards this school season.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to congratulate all the spring athletes for a great season. Makes me very proud to be part of the Raider Athletic Program and see all the success that's going on. And, you know, sportsmanship is an important part of it also. So, proud to get this award and turn it over to a lot of great accomplishments and congratulations to all you guys and gals.
Hold on, Coach. Before you leave, just want to, you know, he was not with us during the winter season, so I wanted to talk about Coach Brahini. Coach Brahini will be retiring this year, and we certainly need to honor him for his contributions here at North Brunswick, especially considering his coaching tenure from 1989 to present day. Coach Brahini has tied the all-time GMC, winning his coach list with a 459 wins. He's inducted into the NJSCA Hall of Fame in January of 2021, and he has seen eight 1,000-point scorers over his time here in North Brunswick. So, we'd like to congratulate Coach Brahini and wish him the best of luck in everything he does from here on out. Thanks, Coach. Coach Tamarana for the softball team. The softball team was the Blue Division winner champion this year. So, congratulations, Coach, and to the team.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming. Last year, I stood in front of you and announced my team's record of two and sixteen. So, we promised a better year this year, and we went out and won the division. We went nine and one in the Blue Division. That one loss, we gave up. We got a little mad about it, but we took it back. Then we went on, we played through other divisions, everything like that, ended up with a first-winning record in about ten years. We ended up twelve and nine, twelve and nine. First division win in school history. I checked all the way back that NJ School Sports would let me go. So, we have the first division win. I also, for the first time, have three players that represented our all-division, so all- Blue Division with us. Megan Kimler couldn't be here tonight, but I have Victoria and Shannon here with me. Victoria also... You're supposed to come up here now and get your award.
Come on down, girls.
There you go. Victoria also is one of two players that was not represented from a red or white division, which took all-conference. I went to the all-conference meeting, and when it came down to selecting a player for representing the all-conference team, when I mentioned Victoria's name, there was not one coach in the room that disagreed with me. So, as a junior, she represented us all-division last year. This year, she's all-division, all-conference, has eighty-eight hits, and she's chasing down one hundred and eighteen. So, we are confident that she will get that next year. Shannon Duffy has been a captain. She has caught for me for the past five years because I was her coach in eighth grade, and I promised her that she would never catch for me again after eighth grade. And here she is as a senior, still catching for me. So, I'm going to follow her to Rutgers and probably make her catch that. No, I'm just kidding. So, but, no, but they're here to represent the softball team. I have to give a speech tomorrow at their banquet. a speech tomorrow at their banquet, so I'll cut it short here. Thank you.
Also don't want to forget that Coach was the Blue Division Coach of the Year. Well-deserved as well. Next, I will present for Coach Bielsi and the boys' volleyball team. Unfortunately, Coach could not be here today, but he has sent me, of course, something to say about his two athletes. I don't know if Shiv Shah is here. I was told he would not, but I'm going to read something about him anyway. This is from Coach. "Only 10 players are selected to all-division out of seven schools. Teams that finish at or near the top of the division get the most all-division selections. It shows a lot of respect for these players and our program that we earned two selections since we were not, did not finish near the top of our division. We may have had a third player as well if our, one of our top guys hadn't suffered an early-season injury." And unfortunately Shiv Shah is not able to make it tonight. This was his first full season fulfilling the vitally important and difficult setter position, which makes it that much more impressive that he earned all-division as a setter. And he was very impressive with non-setting skills like blocking and serving, and great blocking is often rare for a setter. We congratulate Shiv on his accomplishments. The second athlete being recognized is Caleb Ford. Caleb dedicates tremendously to volleyball, to volleyball in the offseason, traveling all over the country. This is his second all-white division award, and like Shiv, he was stellar with skills that are not typically associated with his position, namely middle blocker. Caleb filled the desperate need in our team for serve receivers and defenders, basically back-row position responsibilities. Middles typically only play front row and their only strength are attacking and blocking. Caleb is a rare example of an all-around skilled player. He won all of our defensive competitions at practice this season. He was our best defender. Some of his stats are 90 kills, 13 blocks, and 41 digs. We'd like to congratulate both of them and good luck in college to Shiv at Georgia Tech and Caleb, who will be playing volleyball at Ramapo. So Caleb is here. Come on up. Next, I would like to introduce Coach Adriadis for boys lacrosse.
Alrighty, congratulations all-spring sports. Baseball, great year. So Nate Rosa is my only player here tonight. He received all-GMC selection and all-division selection. For all-GMC, that's the whole division, both divisions, and that's only, the only player from our division that got it. Alright, and that's a huge success with Monroe players and St. Joe's guys as well to get that award. He scored over 100 goals over his career here in four years, over 170 points here. And he's been a tremendous leader for us this year and throughout the program, and he represents the lacrosse program in high regard. And I, you know, nothing but high regards for him and he's going to be well missed. Alright, thank you.
Coach Porzio for girls' lacrosse.
I made them come with me. I'm Coach Porzio. This is my ninth year as a head coach. Congratulations to, I can't talk. Congratulations to all the athletes tonight. Thank you for the board, to the board for having us. We were able to have five players get all-division and all-conference honors. Penelope Jones is a junior. She's a defender and she is the, she's all-red division. Julie Gallardo is a senior captain attacker and she was all-red division as well. She's going to be playing lacrosse at Holy Family next year. Naomi Saipat is a sophomore. She is our goalie. She had a killer, killer year. We're excited to have her back with Penelope as well. So Naomi Saipat. Give a little wave. Naomi, give a little wave. Megan Keefe, she was all-conference, all-red division. She's a sophomore captain who's also going to be returning, so we're excited for that also. I like to embarrass them. And Tiana Saipat, she was the GMC Attack Player of the Year, all-conference and all-red division. She actually ended her career with 230 points, which is the fifth in school history. She's going to be playing at Caldwell next year and we are definitely going to miss her and we wish her the best. Penelope Jones was also all-conference. I'm very, very sorry.
Thank you. Coach Grimes to represent the track team. Looks like Coach Montoya is here as well. Coach will tell you how pivotal he was in the success of many of these athletes this season. Thank you to the board for the pole vault a couple of years ago. It's really paid off. Right, Coach?
Absolutely. We have the best pole vault group in the county, one of the best in the state. So this is the guy that does it. I'm going to let him talk about Manish first.
So I'm Coach Montoya and this is Manish Vankadara. It's his second year pole vaulting and in two years, he's improved, I can't even explain how well he's done so far. He'll be coming back next year, only a junior. He'll be top three in this section coming back or number one in this section hopefully next year. This year, he won red division and all-county as well for pole vault. And it's always funny when they beat your personal record when you were in high school. They like to rub it in a little bit, but he's going to keep jumping higher and higher and I expect him to do big things next year and this year, especially on Friday at groups.
Smoke permitting. Next in line is Jair Dawood. You've heard of his big brother, Zameer Dawood, but this is the little brother. He is the lead leg of the school record four-by-one. That's going to be heading to Franklin for Group Four Championships and most likely to the Mid-A Champions next week. They're also going down to Philadelphia next week to chase the All-American title at Nationals in Philadelphia. Next we have... Next we have a freshman. Elvin is the third leg on that four-by-one. So to keep that in mind, the fastest quartet in school history, the third leg, the curve, is a freshman. So you can imagine how excited I am to have a sophomore and a freshman on the fastest relay coming back. So I'm very excited. Elvin is also going down to Philadelphia to chase the freshman national title in the 100-meter dash as well. Then there's Big Dawood, Zameer. You've known him for football and he's been up here before for track. Well, he's the anchor leg on this four-by-one and he's also going down to Nationals next week to chase the All-American title in the 100-meter dash. He's had a rough season with a bad hamstring, but I think we're alright now. So I'm looking for some big things to come up in the next two weeks. The next one to line, funny thing is, his name is the same as mine. That's Shwan III. That's my son. He's a freshman county champion of 400-meter hurdles. He also actually broke the school freshman records in both the 110 hurdles and the 400-meter hurdles. And he'll be going down to Nationals next week to chase the freshman national title in the 400-meter hurdles. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that Elvin also broke the school freshman record in the 100 and 200. I better make that note. And last but not least down there, Samad Hicks. He's akin to the Dawoods, but he stands out on his own. He's the second leg on that four-by-one. He's also going to group championships in the 200 and he'll be with us at Nationals down there in that four-by-one. So we're very excited because there's only one senior in this group. So we're looking for big things next year.
And lastly, we have Coach Blevins to honor our baseball team. Coach Sook is with him as well tonight. Entire baseball team is coming on up.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Alright, so again, I'm Mark Blevins. This is my seventh year as the head baseball coach. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I also want to thank Mr. Morell, one of the best people I could ever work for. The support, the communication, top-notch. Him and Ms. Laffey and the Athletic Director's Office doing an absolutely amazing job and make our jobs as coaches easier and make our players' lives much better by making sure that they are always prepared and ready to go. So, you know, I think they deserve a big round of applause. So Athletic Directors Sean Morell and Ms. Laffey. This is our 2023 varsity team. We ended up winning the red division this year, the regular season champions of the red division. This is the first time it's ever been done in school history. So give them a big round of applause for that. We finished the season 21 and 7. Second year in a row, we had 20 wins, which was also first time in school history where we had back-to-back 20-win seasons. So that deserves another round of applause. Sorry. Unfortunately, we came up short in two finals. We made it to the GMC finals. We lost to St. Joe's and then we made it to the Central Jersey Group Four Finals and we lost to Oldbridge. So you could imagine that we were super upset that we didn't get to bring home a tournament championship, but to establish ourselves in the regular season was really important. And you could see by the amount of kids that showed up tonight how important baseball is to them. And I appreciate them so much for all their efforts this year. And the high character that they have is because of the families that are here tonight. I see a bunch of them out there, but every single one of them showed high character, high dedication, and understanding of sacrifice and what it means to be really good at baseball. And that's the reason why we've had such a great run the past couple of years. So again, your 2023 red division champions are the North Brunswick Raiders. Also, we're recognizing three players tonight. Our first player, Jomar Carreras. Jomar's a junior for us. He's going to Rutgers University in New Brunswick to play baseball there. This year, he played shortstop for us. He was our leadoff hitter and he earned all-red division and all-conference. Jomar Carreras. I'll give you guys your folders after we're done. Our second player that we're honoring is Omar Carreras, his brother, his older brother. Omar caught for us most of the year this year. He also played the infield, but he's one of the best hitters that I've ever coached and one of the best baseball players also I've ever coached in my entire life. And if you ever got a chance to see him play, you know what I'm talking about. He's, he just helps in every facet and he's going to be sorely missed. He's a fifth-year senior for us and he's going to be going to Tusculum University next year in Tennessee. And I can only imagine that in three or four years from now, you're going to be seeing him play professional baseball in some manner. So Omar Carreras. And then our third player that we're recognizing individually is Zach Konstantinovski. Zach earned all-red division this year, all-conference, and he also received the all-GMC Player of the Year, which is the best baseball player in the GMC County. Zach's also going to be going to Rutgers University in New Brunswick next year to pitch. Well, not next year. Zach will be going next year. Jomar will be going in two years, but Zach will be there next year and I'm sure we can expect super big things from him. I'm not going to mention everybody else by name, but I'm utterly and emotionally grateful for everything that these guys did for us as a program. And this run that we had was magical. I will never forget it and I appreciate you guys so much. And thank you, families, for allowing me to coach such a great group of individuals and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Coach Blevins can stay up here for two seconds. As many people may know his team, his team, I'm sure, this is Coach Blevins' last year here coaching North Brunswick Baseball. He will not be returning next year and I just wanted to say a few words. First of all, I'll go through some of the things that he's accomplished. It's really only been six years here because we lost a full season, right? So, you know, when we hear these numbers, just keep in mind that he's, he's only been here for six years. Not to talk about how many of his athletes have gone on to play college baseball, but in six seasons, coaches amassed 95 wins, okay, since 2017 spring season. He's been a Division Coach of the Year, the GMC Coach of the Year. He won Division Sportsmanship Awards. He's run red division championship. He's won a GMC championship. He's been to the GMC Finals in 2021. He was GMC Champion in '21, '22, and GMC finalist this year in state tournaments. He had state tournament appearances every single year, two-time sectional quarterfinalist, sectional semifinalist, and a sectional finalist. Of course, that's because of his players. He will tell you. He will not take the credit for that, but he was coaching the team when all those things happened. So his team, I'm sure, is appreciative of that. He is also the coach here, North Brunswick, only coach in history with a winning record in both the GMC tournament play and also the state playoffs. So Coach has accomplished many great things. He's very humble, so I'm certain he, he will tell you that as, none of it was him, but I think the guys here and the relationships he built will tell you otherwise. So congratulations, Coach. Thank you. Thank you all. Thanks to the athletes, parents. Thank you for everything you've done and to the board and to Mr. Oka. Thank you very much.
So we're just going to memorialize all the presentations this evening. Be it resolved by the Board of Education that the following resolution be approved. Whereas the Board of Education recognizes the efforts of our student athletes to perform at their highest level of interscholastic competition, and it also recognizes the accomplishment of exceptional achievement. And whereas through leadership of their coaches and with a firm determination to be diligent while preserving excellence, they stand among their peers and represent the North Brunswick Township School District in an exemplary manner. Now therefore, be it resolved that this public acclaim be given to the NBTHS student volunteers, athletes, and coaches for their individual honors, and the NBTHS individual athletic teams for their accomplishments. And be it further resolved that the NBTHS student volunteers, athletes, coaches, and individual athletic teams shall be recognized appropriately and that a copy of this resolution be spread in the permanent minutes of this board. Mr. Neller, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. I just want to say, after watching everything this evening, academics, the arts, athletics, there's a spirit of volunteerism. They're all alive and well here at NBTHS as we stand at the doorstep of the beginning of the 50th anniversary of this beautiful building. So thank you very much. And with that, we'll continue with the business of the board. Is there any old business or new business this evening?
There is not.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll review this evening's brief agenda. We're already on page four. Any questions on page five? Page six? Or page seven? Hearing none? We'll move to public session. We'll first have a public session on agenda items only for this evening. If anyone has any questions on- for this evening. If anyone has any questions on tonight's agenda, now would be your chance to address the board and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, would somebody please move to close this public portion of the meeting?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mrs. Keef, would you please move on item 10 for consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items, personnel, curriculum, instruction, and finance items.
Any further discussion on agenda? We'll need a roll call, please.
Mr. Ali? Mr. Brockman? Mr. Carter? Ms. James? Ms. Keef? Mr. Legori?
Yes, but I abstain on item, curriculum, item 1A on page six as it pertains to myself.
Dr. Patel? Mr. Wen? The motion is passed.
Thank you. We are on item 11, page seven. We'll open it up again for public session on any matter. If anyone would again like to address the board, any matter, three minutes. Seeing none, would someone please move to close this public portion of the meeting?
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you. At this point, we'll move to go into closed session. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here-and-after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: Personnel Matters and Negotiations. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. Please move to go into closed session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May go into closed session.
Thank you. We'll be going into-
Get a motion to go back into open session, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are back in open session.
Thank you. Mrs. Keefe?
Before I make a motion, I would like to thank the negotiations team for all of their hard work in negotiating a successful contract with our plant managers. I would like to thank them for their cooperation and their collaboration. And finally, I would like to make a motion to approve and ratify memorandum of the MOU between the North Brunswick Township Board of Education and the North Brunswick Township Buildings, Grounds Managers Association for the 2023 to 24, 24, 25, and 25, 26 school years. Be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the board president and board council to draft Be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the board president and board council to draft the contract for the 23 to 26 school years and authorizes the board president to execute the same.
There a second? Any further discussion? We'll need a roll call.
Mr. Ali, Mr. Brockman, Mr. Carter, Ms. James, Ms. Keith, Mr. Legori,
Yes.
Dr. Patel, Mr. Wen. The motion passes.
Thank you. We'll need a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.